I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Happy New Year, everybody. We have Councilmember Moniz Auditorial Lee. We have a new deputy city manager. Did you want to introduce your hire?
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council, I'd like to introduce you to Susan Borrego. She's our new deputy city manager. She comes to us by way of a couple of universities in Flint, Michigan, and most recently, Los Angeles. Fortunately, she's up here, not down there. But Sue comes with, and I've shared with you all of you, all of you, her resume, so you have an understanding of her experience. But she comes with a great, highly skilled, was a former president of St. Louis State University at one point, chancellor at the University of Michigan, I think it was. And she has great experience working with city governments in her various roles in the university system. And I'm really happy to have her on board. And while we're going to miss Sarah, we're welcoming Sue to join us now. Thank you.
Welcome, Dr. Borrego. All right, we have roll call and declarations of conflicts of interest.
Councilmember Abraham, here and none. Councilmember Vixel?
Here and none.
Councilmember Moniz?
Here and none.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here and none.
Mayor Blue Black.
Here and none. All right, approval of agenda as posted or amended?
So moved.
Mayor?
Yes?
So moved with the amendment that we split nine A and B.
Put nine who-to-hoo?
We put nine B in front of nine A.
Nine B in front of nine A?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you had the motion first, you're second.
I'll second her amended motion.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so B before A on nine. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. Pass five zero. All right, we will start with some presentations. Carnegie Arts Center, Lisa McDermott.
Hey, y'all.
Welcome.
I noticed on the agenda, I was listed as the 2223 Annual Report, which would be really bad. We're 2324 Annual Report. So thank you, as always, for having me come here with our annual update. This is our 13th year in the fabulous Carnegie Arts Center. The foundation is grateful for the continued opportunity to serve the community in partnership with the City of Turlock. For anyone who's not familiar with the Carnegie, let me quickly introduce you to what we do. In advancing our mission to be a regional gathering place for vibrant engagement with the arts, we promote creative activity in all its forms. Our galleries exhibit art from around the world and from just around the corner, and our educational and entertaining programs reach out to all ages and interests. And whenever possible, we link different art forms together through classes, lectures, films, concerts, poetry readings, and family activities, so that everyone in our community can come enjoy themselves and engage with the arts. Our attendance and participation numbers have been steady, though this year we saw another amazing jump in class enrollment. You will like this. Almost 50% higher than last year. The, we think that that's a big addition of the toddler classes that we offer and the expansion of our ceramics program. And so we're welcoming in many more students, both youth and adults. Our facility rentals are not just back to pre-pandemic levels now, they're increasing, bringing in more family and business events. And we continue to increase the number of programs on our calendar, balancing out the youth activities with more programs for adult audiences. Always mindful of our commitment to the city council to be sure that youth programming makes up more than 25% of our activity. To just give a little flashback, the fall of 2023 featured an exhibition of works by African-American artists. Selected from a single private collection, this traveling exhibition, which was going all around the country, we were the only California venue. It included works from the Harlem Renaissance period of the 1920s up through some pieces that were completed within the past decade. It was a beautiful show that touched on really important themes and was well received by the 1,300 elementary school students who came on field trips. That was followed in the spring with the Valley Focus Exhibition, which is now in its 10th year, being an exhibition where we feature valley artists. This year, in '24, the Valley Focus Show was a retrospective of works by Turlock native Richard Gomez. Richard now teaches art at UC Merced and is a well-respected muralist. The exhibition included paintings from Richard's entire career and included a site-specific mural in the Ferrari Gallery that I'll tell you a little bit more about in a minute, but you can see the mural there with some of Richard's other paintings. As far as our exhibitions go, as we've been doing for many years, we start our fiscal year out in the summer with the Carnegie Arts Showcase, an open juried competition for regional artists. And we close the year in June with the Youth Art Show Ready Set Show. And together, these two exhibitions are an opportunity for whatever age you are, if you're creative in the community, you can find a place here. Some of the highlights of the year included grants. We received the Heartland Creative Core grant this year, which was the largest grant we've ever applied for, ever received. It was a grant program from the California Arts Council that was administered through Merced United Way and the St. Louis Arts Council in a partnership. And it was designed to employ local artists on community-based projects. The grant paid for the downtown mural on First Street outside that was dedicated in September of 2023. The community celebration that we hosted for that mural brought more than 200 folks downtown for a classic car show to celebrate the mural, live music, all of it hosted by our friends at Taqueria La Primera. The remainder of the grant money covered the creation of the mural for the exhibition. That was painted inside the Carnegie Arts Center. It was a temporary mural. It's gone now. If you missed it, too bad. But that process included working with students at Roseland High School to develop the ideas and the imagery for the project, and they all participated in the painting process as well. Another grant highlight last year was a grant from the Boyette Foundation's Make Dreams Real Fund, which funded our field trip program, bringing more of our region's rural and lower-income schools to participate at the Carnegie. The grant covered the cost for more outreach for school buses and for participation fees for the schools that have a higher percentage of low-income students in their population. We received a second round of this grant for the '24-'25 school year, and it's already bringing students from a little farther away and from little smaller schools, and we're pretty excited about that. One of our other highlights, working with the Downtown Association, we ran the third annual banner contest for the light poles downtown themed on family in the '23-'24 year, sponsored by the Turlock Lions Club, Stan State, and Rubik Refrigeration, with the support of the Turlock Downtown Property Owners. We selected 20 winning designs from 172 entries that we received from kids all over town. The kids whose work was selected ranges in age from four to 16. Currently downtown are the agriculture-themed banners from the '24 season, and we're already working with the Downtown Association for banner contests that will open up here in another week or two to get banners up before Fourth of July on the theme of America the Beautiful. In the spring of 2024, we also were able to highlight international music through a wonderful generous bequest from the Ralph Shavazian Trust. We have an endowed gift now that will fund a once-a-year concert of international music. And in Ralph's honor, we opened that program in the spring of 2024 with a concert of Armenian music played by the Keftheim Legacy Band from Fresno. And this year, in March 22nd, mark your calendars, we're featuring a band called Quinsave. They're from Salinas, and they play cumbia and other Latin music. Tickets should be on sale soon for that one. Lastly, in our highlights is the 2024 Block Party, which was funded by a grant from the City of Turlock Community Activities Fund. And we welcomed, we think, at least 700 people last June to the perfect day of outdoor fun, art activities, vendors, live music. It was a great community event out in front of the Carnegie and the public safety facility. And then, the big thing we did this year with our board, a major step, we first introduced our first strategic plan. It's a three-year plan, and the pillars of the plan, as you see, are engagement, collaboration, and stewardship. The areas of engagement and collaboration are tied to the Carnegie's mission of serving the community by expanding programs and our audiences and by establishing really enriching partnerships in the community. In the area of stewardship, we're looking at financial sustainability as well as managing the needs of our beautiful but aging facility, and we're building leadership capacity in the board and the staff. Ah, the money. The fiscal year '23-'24 was an excellent year for us. We had a significant increase in both income and expenses over the last year, but most of that was due to the Heartland Creative Core grant, which was over $90,000 of income and expense. Regular income and expense stayed fairly steady. We're really fortunate. Want to thank the support of our business community as our season sponsors, and we want to thank the community who supported our endowment fund over the years. The endowment currently stands at about $2.8 million in investments, and last year, the end of 2024, realized just over $100,000 in returns that we were able to use to supplement the Carnegie's budget. Currently on view in our gallery is the pop-up exhibition of works by four valley printmakers. Chris Garcia, Maggie Gonzalez-Lameli, Ruben Sanchez, and Marissa Segovia are all valley natives, and they are all fabulous printmakers. January is kind of a quiet time, so we threw a little exhibition together to fill up a couple of weeks in January, and it's really fantastic if you want to come see it. It's a little less formal. We didn't use the whole gallery. It's kind of a little intimate thing. We had an opening reception with 80 people last Friday night, and it was, it's really fun. Coming next is our annual Valley Focus Exhibition in the spring. This year, we're featuring 12 emerging artists. All the artists in the show come from valley communities, from Sacramento to Fresno, and all of them are under the age of 35. We have painters, sculptors, ceramic artists, drawing, printmaking, photography, and mixed media. It should be a show full of energy and fresh ideas, and we're pretty excited to be able to give these young artists this kind of focused opportunity. And that's my report. We hope to see everyone at the Carnegie soon. There'll be lots going on. I am happy to answer any questions about last year, about what's coming up this year.
The kiln getting a lot of use?
Kiln's getting a lot of use. Our adult classes in wheel throwing are going really well, and all of the kids' classes fill up really fast.
Cool. Other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right. The next thing is appointment to city council boards, commissions, committees for this year. So as they are listed there, I would like to suggest those, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. Passes on to five zero. And then for Vice Mayor, I would like to ask Rebecca Moniz to be.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Third? Okay, we have a motion and a second and a third, and we call the roll?
Okay, Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. Five zero. All right. And then it looks like Director Fisher is up for some fun. Going to tell us about a sweet award that we got? Well, probably Selena got. Oh, look at Vanna out there. Go, girl.
Good evening, Mayor Blue Black and members of the council. What I love about my job is sometimes I get to come and wear different hats and present happy things, and that's what we're here to do tonight. Tonight, I have Selena Estrada, our plant manager for our water treatment plant.
Hi.
Well, today, we're here to share some exciting news. We received a prestigious award for the SRWA recently. The Design Build Institute of America, DBIA, gave us an award, a national award of merit. DBIA annually recognizes projects that embody the best in the design-build method, so we were very happy to receive that. A couple of things that they really emphasize is streamlined communication, collaboration, efficiency, meaning faster projects, fewer change orders, and cost savings, improved innovation and quality, enhanced owner involvement and collaboration. So those are the things that we were judged upon when we submitted the application. The Regional Surface Water Supply Project was one of 25 projects nationwide to receive the esteemed National Award of Merit for Outstanding Project for 2023. Some of the project highlights that we are proud of, the final contract amount came in at $197,255,475. That funding was primarily as $185 million from low-interest loans from the state revolving fund, and that was an incredible gift, about $38 million in grant awards. A couple of the construction methods or the metrics that we had, it was about 42 months from start to finish. There was 55 change orders. They were about 80.85% of the final contract amount. We logged 640,746 total construction hours. And I think the thing that we're most proud of is if we looked at our safety performance, total recordable incident rate, that's, you know, how many incidents you have on a project. Just to give you kind of an idea, the industry average is about 3.9, and we came in at a .94. So overall, it was like a really, really safe project. Our DART, which is Days Away Restricted Time, industry average is about 2.1. We came in at 0.31. Our contingency, we only used about 15% of the original contingency that was spent on the change orders. You know, we were very, very proud of that. And amidst COVID, we had some serious supply chain setbacks, and because of the design-build methodology, we're able to move forward without really any delay, and delays were very, very costly. So we were able to avoid all that. A project like this, it takes many players. It's not just the, you know, the teams. We had Jacobs Engineering as our engineering and design build firm. Over construction was a primary contract on the job. MCI Mountain Cascade and San Joaquin Electric, they, you know, were the primary subs to the contractor. And ICM, Infraer Construction Management, and West Coast were the owners' advocates for the project. And they were all needed to make sure the project was successful. A particular highlight of our success, I believe, is our outstanding leadership that, you know, we have from the council and especially from our plant manager, Selena. She stepped in, she took charge, she, you know, she spoke her mind, you know, at the end of it all, you know, the design-build process allowed us to make sure that, like, the product that we got fit for everyone. And everyone knows, if you have a project that is terrible to run, it's not going to work out very well. Well, you know, it was really a monumental task, and she's, we're fully staffed, and, you know, she's staffed it with some of the best operators that we have in California, so we're very, very proud of all that. And really just been instrumental in the plant's seamless transition to delivering surface water. We extend heartfelt gratitude to the City of Turlock and the City Series for trusting us to deliver this critical project. It's been our privilege to provide safe, reliable water to our communities. And lastly, thank you, Mayor Blue Black, and, you know, Director Franco, for spending all those lunches, you know, out there in the board meetings, hashing things out. We really appreciate that and all you do for our city. So be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thanks, guys. Congratulations. Havana, get in there. All right. Next is public participation, where we speak directly on items that are within the subject matter of this jurisdiction for three minutes, and I have one card. Milt?
Good evening, council, staff, and Turlock residents. Milt Treewiler. Tonight, I'm going to speak on a subject that some people in Turlock do not want to acknowledge. They choose not to be open-minded to a reality that exists in our city. I understand that every person at one time was a young child. I understand that what happened to a person in their childhood has a profound influence on them and their beliefs. However, as we grow older and mature, we can look back on the past to realize that we have choices in what we believe. We can be open-minded and observe and examine the facts and reality. In Turlock, we have people who are less fortunate than most of us. They do not have a home to live in, and some suffer from a mental illness. We have people that don't have, that didn't not have the best of parents, or maybe only one parent. They did not have a childhood like most of us had. They may have been abused by their mother or father, or may have had a parent who that was an alcoholic. Did they choose this kind of lifestyle? No, they were born into it. We need to treat everyone like we would like them to treat us. Let's make sure that every one of our residents are treated with dignity and respect. Today, we know we are one human race regardless of our ancestry. Science shows us that. We are all human beings, and we must be open-minded, and we must strive to be empathetic, compassionate, and understanding of other people and their issues. We must do our best to provide low-income housing for our homeless residents. We need, we need more Avena Bella complexes and more low-income apartments on the west side of Turlock. We also need low and luxury condominiums all over Turlock. That is exactly what our Turlock residents told us in the most recent housing poll. So let's get to work on this and get them built. And I know it's easy to say something, but it also takes time to plan these things out. We need to get started on this, and we need to do some real, actual work on this. We cannot continue to not have housing for low-income people because then they become homeless. Avena Bella has been great, and of course, the Salvation Army facility is great. It gives the people an opportunity that are low-income to have a place to go, and that's exactly what we need. It's our responsibility to see that this is being done in Turlock. And on the consent calendar, I'd like to pull seven F and seven G for discussion. Thank you.
Anyone else who did not fill out a card?
I'd like item seven E polled for discussion, if we could. And the other one I want to talk about is, in Southern California right now, we're going through a life-altering natural disaster, or disaster. And I think that it's very important for the city to realize that if they think that we are not capable of having something like that happen, you're very much mistaken. And with that, I'd like to see the fire department come through sometime in the next month or so with what their plan would be if we face something similar. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Happy New Year. Madam Mayor, council, staff. Good to see you back. Hopefully, I won't get in much trouble for this, but happy birthday, Madam Mayor. And I want to wish you a safe trip.
Thank you.
Back there. Okay. Can we pull consent item seven D?
Dear Lord Members.
As in dog. And I know that I missed the past couple of council meetings, but I'm wondering if the spreadsheet Vice Mayor Franco's been asking for, if that is available. If it is, I'd like to get a copy of it. If I remember correctly, in October, the city attorney said that there was a possible update that you were going to give about 1617 Colorado, that you guys were trying to work out, you know, some type of security arrangement with them. If you have any more information on that, I'd like to hear that, George, if that's possible. Then Columbia pool, kind of wondering when we might be having the grand opening for that and a better explanation for why we've had like a year delay on that. Also, I'd like to find out, maybe we'll find out at the next meeting, but the status of the lease revenue bonds, as I've brought out before, we were told back in June of 2023 that we were going to have that money in September of 2023. I'd like to have a better explanation for why we've had almost a year and a half delay on getting the first trants of $25 million there for road construction projects. And the bond rates have been increasing lately. So that is a concern. And about a year ago, Mr. Treewiler mentioned it would be nice to have more town hall meetings, and everybody on the council thought that was a good idea. Matter of fact, Councilmember Abraham asked the mayor if you would attend her meeting, and you said yes. You would be very happy to do that. I think it's been nine months, six months, nine months, a year. We haven't had any of those meetings. Just wanted to point out that little detail. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we will close public comment and come back to see if there are any items to be taken for separate consideration other than D, E, F, G, H, no, kidding. Okay, stops at G. If not, then a motion and a second, please.
Move to approve with the items polled.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. Passes five zero. All right, item D, David. Director Fisher? Let's do it backwards. If you'll just stand up there, and you'll hear the questions. Okay, so D was, Ron, go ahead and, we'll open it to the public. Let's get your questions, so we can move backwards.
Yeah, I just wanted to have a better understanding of, I think the original budget was $30,000 or something like that, and it seems like we are getting a increasing need for general counsel, special counsel services. Can you give us an idea of what those special counsel services are and why we're getting so much more need for that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on item consent, D, David? Okay, we'll close public comment. And Director?
Yeah, the original contract amount was for 100,000. It was broken up into three years, over $33,000, for $33,000 a year. We primarily used that for the sewer rate study. We found that it was very beneficial for us to have legal counsel on the front end. You know, one of the things is a little easier to prevent problems than to solve them later. We're going to be bringing to you a water rate study in this, in the first quarter of this year. We'll use that, we'll use these services. Now, Jarvis Fay, who's been on, she presented a lot for our sewer rate study. She did a very, very good job for the city. And then we'll also be using that for any type of TOT tax bounds, you know, for the, any, anything in the future for any of those. So they'll each be paid by the department, respective departments that are needing them.
Mr. Petralakis?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, Isaac and I sort of horned in on that, and we used them for the TOT tax that went on the ballot. And we use a lot of lawyers, and I think they've earned this additional work. They're very impressive. It's kind of a smaller firm that specializes in a number of the areas that the city has a need for right now, and some of which described by the director, and also some of the, I'll call them the longer-term nagging issues we've been dealing with that we're trying to finally, you know, clear, clear the board on, on those. So they'll be helping with those.
Questions? All right. What is the will of council?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Blue?
Yes. Passes five zero. All right, E, Edward, we're going to open the public bill. You didn't have E? I apologize. Who had E? Oh, Bob? I wrote it down wrong. God, I got all the way to the 14th before I made a mistake. God, I got all the way to the 14th before I made a mistake.
I think it's important to note that the TOT tax did not pass. So that's what we paid those guys for. I see that they rejected all the bids and I was kind of curious as to why the bids were rejected and what the bike lane improvement's going to be and how it ties into the master bike plan.
Okay, we...
Hold on, we're going to wait, see if anybody has any questions. Any other questions?
No, that's it.
Okay, anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment and Mr. Morse?
We only received one bid and it was much, much higher than what we, engineers estimate was. So we rejected and the goal is to put it back into a slurry project where they're doing a lot more of the city and the price should come down overall instead of by itself. And it is to improve it. Not only, we could have just done the striping, but we're also going to do the crack seal and slurry seal and then restripe it to take care of that portion of the road. So that's what we're going to do is come back with the next slurry seal and crack seal project and get a better price.
Councilmore?
Time, timing, timeline. I mean, is that something in the next six months, two years?
The next slurry project's going to be coming up soon. So it'll be done this year.
And in regard to how it meets with our overall active transportation plan, you know, we already have this type of bike lane here, but it's going to be enhanced visibility.
Correct.
Okay.
What is the will of council?
Move to approve.
Motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaq?
Yes, this is passed from 5-0. All right, I will open to the public, item F, and your question?
Okay, I see what's been done here and I actually think the reason for doing it is good. It's not anything about Director Fisher. It's about the fact that any person in a management position has to have a lot of backup. And no person can do everything and no person can be an expert on everything. And it's important that we make sure he has the backup personnel that he needs to accomplish what's required of him. And that's really my comment. So I just want to make sure that he has the people he needs behind him to help him do this horrendous, tremendous job that he's doing. But he needs help, just a comment. And I also have 7G.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we have closed, closed public comment. Any comments? You good?
I'm good. I'm happy to help.
I agree. You do need help and you're doing a tremendous job, but it's always easier to have more people help you. What is the will?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaq?
Yes, 5-0. Thank you, Director. All right, item G, we'll open it to the public.
Okay, this, I see that we want to have 10 different agreements with 10 different engineering firms for surveying and other engineering work. And I can imagine the reasons for that, but I can't imagine 10 of them. And obviously, again, I think I've called this to your attention before because we have a lot of these already out. I know they're basically for roads, the ones that are already out. I don't know if these are also for roads. I looked through most. So in other words, this would be very helpful if we had someone who wants to come into Turlock and build a condominium. This could be something that would help you. I mean, we have the vistas on Montavista, beautiful four-story complexes, but they're restricted to college student or college-associated people. We need people over, or we need these type of buildings right here on Lander Avenue. We need these buildings all over the town, but especially our west side because we have, we don't have enough low-income housing. And I'm about the only person I know of that can live on my social security simply because I have zero debt and I have everything paid for. I don't have anything that I owe on. I pay my credit cards every month and I can live on social security. And I'm not making that much, but people making as much as I could. If I didn't have that, I would be homeless myself. It's just a reality. We need home, or we need housing for the homeless. And one thing we do have to our, available to us, there is now a state law that allows churches to build housing for the homeless on their unused property in their church location. And we have quite a few of nice churches here on the west side and also on other parts of town. I think this is something we should check out and see. Okay, I'm getting a little bit off. But they could do all, they could do all of the inspections that would be necessary in this and take care of all this, these 10 people. And you only pay for them when you need, when you need them to, correct?
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we will close public comment and bring it back. Mr. Morse?
Okay, the 10 firms, the on-call firms, we've done like six in the past. It's for engineering projects. It's not for private development. It's because, we increased it because of, we have the new sewer rates coming in. We have a lot of projects for sewers that we need to take care of at the plant and in their streets. Also, the storm drain master plan was completed. So we've got projects with that. And we've got the new water study coming and water rates coming and more water projects. And so these firms, if we only had so many, they can only work on one project at a time. We've got to be able to have a pool to pull from. And it is as on-call only. So that's what we wanted to do is just to get ready because I already know four projects, as soon as this gets approved, we can send them out, get the lift station going in Morgan Ranch, get other projects going and help with developments, but...
Okay, questions? What is the will?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaq?
Yes, passes 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, final readings, there are none. Public hearings 9A will be after 9B. So 9B is first. Director Werner, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor Booblaq, council members. Welcome, Councilmember Phillips and members of the public. Tonight, the item that I'm bringing forward to you is approving an amendment and restatement of promissory note for the Turlock Gospel Mission. Just to kind of give a little bit of background for Councilmember Phillips and to bring council up to date. If you remember, council had approved funding agreements to fund the Turlock Gospel Mission Day Center, which is across from their shelter for day services. Their day services would be things like, you know, having services available for the people who are homeless to, for phones, mail services, being able to do their laundry, having showers available. It would also be an emergency overflow for the shelter if needed. Through, of course, of several, since 2006, we ran into some problem with funding. We ran out of funding. And the council did agree to add more funding that we have from our CDBG as well as some funds from the state. So we've gone back and forth several times with TGM, working through some things with the agreement. One of the, one of the comments from council that have been implemented was to take the loan agreement from 10-year, a 10-year loan agreement to 12 years. So it is a forgivable loan that will be extended from the 10 to 12 years. And that was that, the comment from, from council. As well as, there is an operating agreement that did include some of the things that council wanted to see. You know, the restrooms available, showers, laundry, being able to have access to a phone. So those services are going to be at the day center across the street from the shelter. The shelter will operate Monday through Friday. On the weekends, it won't operate there. And that was at the, really, the neighborhood was kind of concerned and had expressed concern to TGM about operating on the weekends as well. So those same services that are, that will be offered at the day center will be at the shelter just across the street. They've been providing those services for, since the day center's been closed. So some of the things that, we had gone back in October, council had asked us to work on. The TGM had expressed concern with the forgivable amount of the loan and that it be combined. So we did work through with our council on, with our housing attorney on that and we got those documents to a point where TGM was agreeable to the, to those loan amounts. The start date of the loan forgiveness period is the date today, if it's the will of council to go forward and approve those documents. And the loan, as I said, the loan term would be 12 years. And there was some language that TGM did want to have updated and changed in the contract between Turlock Gospel Mission and the contractor. So those, those changes were made. So TGM did take it to their board in December of last, last month and they are, have approved, the board did approve those changes and we're ready to move forward. So I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, Mr. Kirby, did you guys want to speak first? I'll open it to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. As Ms. Warner said, we currently are offering a fairly exhaustive list of daytime services to people in our community who are experiencing homelessness, food insecurity, housing insecurity, domestic violence, a number, a range of issues and services. This project to restore services to the day center would give us a central location for our clients to engage those services and a place for them to find safety during times of inclement weather and other emergencies. The building would serve during the day as a day center, cooling center, warming center, a place for them, for folks to engage those services that Ms. Warner mentioned in addition to a host of other services and would serve in the evening as overnight overflow shelter when necessary. It would also serve, again, during times of inclement weather as cooling and heating shelter. We appreciate the council's consideration. This has been a long journey to get this project done, but we have, over the years, accomplished a great deal in partnership with the city and we're excited about continuing to do that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Chris?
Just a quick thank you for signing both Adrian Werner and Jennifer Figueroa to this project. They shepherded it through very well and so thank you, council, for doing that. And Regan, also the city manager.
Anyone else? Werner?
I just had a quick comment. I see that they did make one change here, well, one change. In other words, they will, this will be forgiven in 12 years from tonight, is from what I understand. And normally, it would be forgiven after the project was completed. Is that correct? Will there be some kind of guarantee that this project will be completed within a specific amount of time? And it won't be a four-year project or whatever? And, and that's happened here in the city before where the projects are extended out, way, way out. And that could be an issue because we'd be paying the money. They would be getting the money, but we wouldn't be getting the service. And it is something that will help our homeless population and that's good. And so in other words, do we have a guarantee that they'll have this project filled or completed in a reasonable amount of time?
Anyone else?
I guess I have a question about use for overflow for the city attorney. Do we need, does the city need to declare an emergency like we did before to allow them to use that as an overflow? And then I also related to that for the We Care Kitchen and Dining Hall, the new one that was built. When that project was first talked about in December of 2019, boy, that was a long time ago. One of the justifications for that was that the dining hall could be used as overflow shelter. So we now have that. And I'm wondering if we have to declare a local emergency to allow that to be used as overflow shelter? And I bring that up because I remember October or something like that, the manager, the new manager for the We Care Shelter, and also I see that every day in the shelter availability information that I get from the county, that the We Care Shelter is full almost every day. And she was saying they were having to turn people away. Then I also ask the fundamental question, what will make this different than the We Care Day Center? Okay, because we tried that and we didn't feel it was a success in terms of lessening the impact on downtown. So I'm wondering what is going to happen or what is going to be done with this day center to where it will be different? And also with the We Care Day Center, that was funded by the city. So you were able to review the funding for it like in six months or nine months, whatever it was, you were able to turn down the funding. In this case, okay, it's going to be there for 10 years or whatever and the, and the city's not going to have any say in it. And there's already concerns expressed by the neighbors of not wanting it open on weekends because of the impact on the local community. So it kind of raises questions in my mind of what we're doing. So, and I would just remind Madam Mayor that we started this path December 12th, 2018, your first council meeting when you were first mayor on this. Okay, so, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we will close the public comment. We'll start with Mr. Petralakis.
I was afraid of that.
You know.
You know, I would have to go back and look and I'll bring back the answers. My gut is probably the emergency would have to be declared based on the CUP conditions, but I'll have to talk to Adrian about that. I can either respond to Mr. Bragman directly or bring the answers back here if people are interested.
I'm hoping we're going to put it on our website someday, but okay. Ms. Warner?
So regarding the, the time for the project, as Mr. Trewy-Wilder brought up, if it's the will of the council to go forward with the project, the contract for the contractor, he is to begin work within 10 days after the agreements have been signed, which hopefully would be tonight. Then he has 120 days to complete the construction. That's still, the scope of work that's still, identified in your packet that still needs to be done to bring the building into so that TGM can be used. So that's the timing for the actual project and construction. The 12 years is the forgivableness of the loan. So yes, over the course of the next 12 years, I believe it was like 0.33%, there is a percentage of the loan each year that is forgiven. And as, you know, for that, for the end of that 12-year period, then that loan is forgiven as long as they are continued operating within the confines of the regulatory agreement that they, that we have with HUD and in accordance to the funding with CDBG funds. So that, that's a little bit different. That once the loan is forgiven, then, you know, they do have monitoring with the, annually with the city and HUD. So that's, that's a little bit different than the actual project being completed. TGM is that, what their, what their goal is to, is to, that's what they do. TGM is that, what their, what their goal is to, is to, that's what they do. They, they help the, our homeless population, people in need, providing those services. So every indication they've indicated to city staff is that even after this 12 years, they continue, they, they plan to continue indefinitely. So, George already answered that. Do you want me to address the...
What's different than We Care?
So the difference between We Care would be more of the funding. So we are finishing a project that had been, we, we helped purchase that building with TGM. The services that are probably very similar, but TGM is, it's, it's just another service that TGM already offers. It just gives them a more, as Christian said, a more centralized location for those services. So they already offer those services. It's just kind of helps them better identify those. We Care, I'm not real, you know, I just was on the periphery of that. So they're very similar services, but at the council did decide that, that those funds could be better used and serve our population elsewhere. As far as the day center for We Care, it is open. I'd have to also look at their use permit for their shelter, I believe, as Mr. Petralakis already said, is that they do have the, the ability to have overflow if needed, and we'd have to look in to see what that would be. I hope that answers.
Okay, questions?
I have a follow-up question to what you were saying about the contractor's timeline. So this contractor, we utilized them on another project recently with similar terms of you have a deadline, you have to pay $200 a day past that deadline, and they were able to deliver, correct?
They, they did deliver. They actually delivered under that timeline. So he was, he, he met that timeline with some time to spare.
And, and, you know, please help me if I'm, I'm misspeaking here, but I think that a great difference was how the housing department and the inspections and the plans and everything were operating differently than at the start of another project that took a very long time.
Yes.
Correct? So the combination of a contractor that we know can do this work in this timeline and better front-end processes, we're in a very different place than another project that took a long time.
We are. We've had several, I don't want to say changes, but updates and cleanups of our processes and, and things that are in the department. So those have helped us streamline a lot of our processes and be able to better serve the community and our contracts. So, yes.
Yeah, it's all open.
I'm, I'm not sure if anyone from TGM would like to speak to this, but, you know, to the, the thoughts of how is this going to be different than, than the other day center that we've spoken or we've tried before? Could you speak a little bit to your collaboration with the neighborhood and how you can ensure that you've been operating there for the time you have and mitigate problems?
Leading the witness.
Pardon?
Leading the witness.
Hey, that's what these questions are about.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So a couple of things I would just point out. The Turlock Gospel Mission started operating a day center for people experiencing homelessness in 2010 or 2011. It was the first homeless day center in Central Valley. So we have many years of experience operating this kind of facility. We have many years of developing a culture around our services that when our clients come, when our guests come, they are treated like guests, and they engage services in a respectful way. We have developed an ability to, to have a lot of influence over the way that they engage in that neighborhood directly around our facilities. We've spent a lot of time and relational equity-building relationships with the folks that live close by. We respond very, very rapidly when one of our neighbors has a problem, either with their property or with what they perceive to be a problem with one of our guests. We respond very quickly. We respond financially, respond with labor, we respond in whatever aspect we need to. And so we've developed a great relationship. The request from our neighbors not to operate in the, during the weekend is a longstanding request. We operated seven days a week there in the day center for several years, and we noticed on the weekends when our neighbors are home, the level of conflict goes up. And so our neighbors eventually came and said, hey, is it possible not to have the day center open during the weekend because our kids are here, we're all home from, from work, et cetera? And so as a gesture of respect to our community and to our neighborhood, we, we took that, that direction. And so I, you know, in terms of how it's different from day, the We Care Day Center, one, I think, difference is we're a few blocks away from, further away from downtown. And again, we have a long list of, of really great services, including telemedicine, including telephones, including telephone chargers, including meals, pet services. Through a partnership with the city, we're able to offer personal property storage. I mean, there's a whole host of services that our clients engage, and we actively try to build service interactions that are, are two or three hours long, so that when folks come to our property, they're able to find a number of services there, they're able to spend time there. And that does reduce the number of conflicts that we see in the downtown area.
Any other questions? What is the will of council?
Thank you.
Look to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abrams? Yes. Councilmember Biggsel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
No.
Councilmember Phillips?
No.
Mayor Bubak?
No.
Okay, so it does not pass? So we'll move on to item A. Mr. Garal.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. The item before you is request to approve the submittal of a five-year plan amendment for the permanent local housing allocation, or PLHA, program to the Department of Housing and Community Development, and approving an increase in corresponding, corresponding budget appropriations for the amendment. PLHA funding came about as part of a 15-bill housing package that was passed in 2017, the Building Homes and Jobs Act, SB 2, which established a $75 recording fee on all real estate documents with the funds dedicated to increasing the supply of affordable housing in California. The PLHA program provides non-competitive funding to community block grant funds entitlement jurisdictions on an ongoing formula, and it's based on each jurisdiction's share of the total 2017 CDBG allocation to California. Forty percent of the total funds must be allocated annually to affordable owner-occupied workforce housing, which is defined as housing that is affordable to low- to moderate-income individuals and families. An example of this would be allowable activities providing first-time homebuyer assistance to income-eligible families. On November 15th, 2022, council authorized the submission of the five-year PLHA plan, and agreement was signed for the following activities. As you can see from the five-year plan, 75% was going to go to the ongoing costs of the Navigation Case Management Center. 10% was going to go to acquisition, rehab, and permanent, and, I'm sorry, and preservation of permanent housing units. 10% was going to go to development, acquisition, rehab, and preservation of affordable rental ownership, rental and ownership housing, and 5% to administration. In November of 2023, the 2019 funds were redirected, as you can see, 95% to development, acquisition, rehabilitation, and preservation of affordable rental housing. These funds were used to complete the rehabilitation of a city-owned fourplex unit located on Lambert Way, and then was transferred to a nonprofit agency to provide affordable rental housing for a 55-year period. In 2022, and staff are proposing that 15% of the PLHA funds go to rehabilitate owner-occupied properties that are in need of accessibility and/or health and safety modifications, 40% of the PLHA funds to provide first-time homebuyer down payment assistance to those at or below 120% of AMI, and 5% of the funds for administration costs. For the remaining 40% for the 2020 allocation, staff proposes to rehabilitate three of the city-owned, single-family homes to bring them up to housing-quality standards. These properties are located on Birchwood Way, Shadow Park Drive, and Cody Court. Once the three properties are rehabilitated, there are two options for disposable, disposal of the properties per PLHA guidelines. The city could sell the properties to first-time homebuyers at or below 80% AMI. This may require selling the homes before market value due to the purchasing price limit of $428,000 set by HUD. We wouldn't know that until the house was rehabbed and we had the official appraisal done. And also, due to the homes being purchased with CDBG funds, we're unable to sell the homes to individuals and families up to the 120% of AMI that PLHA allows. Or secondly, the city could identify a nonprofit agency through a request for proposal to transfer the property to provide affordable rental housing for a period of 55 years. The staff report is presenting selling either all three properties as option one or option two. After further thought and at the will of the council, staff believes the best option for the property on Birchwood would to actually be do an RFP for a nonprofit to provide affordable housing. The reason being is the city currently owns another property right next door that is being used as rental to income-eligible tenants. This property actually went out to RFP and was going to be transferred to Stanislaus Equity Partners. However, after about a year, they mentioned that they're no longer interested. We believe, after talking to nonprofits, that having two properties next to each other would increase the interest of nonprofits to, to apply for the RFP. For the other two properties located on Shadow Park Drive and Cody Court, staff believes the best option is to sell the first-time homebuyers, as this would help meet the 40% ownership requirement of the PLHA funding. For the 20, for the 2021 through 2023 funds, staff is proposing to use 50% of the PLHA funds for accessibility and/or health and safety rehabilitation for owner-occupied properties, 45% of the funds for ownership opportunities, including down payment assistance, for first-time homebuyers at or below 120% of AMA, and 5% for administration. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Figueroa. Can you clarify a little bit, you know, because looking back at, this is fiscal year 2020, and, you know, there's deadlines on these things. Can you speak a little bit to how we are still within the deadlines on this and how we can get this out?
So because it's a, it's a fee that they collect from real estate, we are actually four years, four or five years behind. So they're actually not dispersing 2020 funds until this year, because that's why they give us an estimate. They estimated we'd get up to 1.8 million, and they don't know those actual costs until they collect the fees. So we would receive the 2020 funds in April of this year.
And then how long do we have to get that out?
Thirty-six months.
Okay. Okay. Because the original staff report, what was that, November 15th of 2022?
Correct.
I, I don't know if HCD didn't tell us that, or, you know, the, the things have changed, but it's good to hear that we still have more time for that. And then can you clarify a little bit on the first-time homebuyer program? And, you know, in recent years, we have not been able to get that program off the ground. And so now that we're being asked to allocate money to that, can you speak to how, what changes are going to be forthcoming?
So the, the housing division actually has a proposal that they'll be taking to the loan committee on how to revamp that policy, that program to make it a little more viable. We know that the current policy at $50,000 and with the interest rates, it's just not really doable for that income level. And so we've done a little research, and we do have a proposal that we will be taking to loan committee, actually this week, to get their input on. Also, to be honest, we've done a little bit of research, and some of the houses actually have come down a little bit. Now, that could change in a month, so.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Oh, dear God. Together.
I listened to you last time. I'll wait for you. Come on, go ahead.
Too polite. No, you go, you go.
You, in answer to her question, I, I didn't hear clearly, in terms of the number of months that we have to actually spend the money, like for 2020, that we're not getting till 2025. I'm sorry, was it six months or 36?
Thirty-six months.
Okay, good. Okay. It would be, I'd be interested in finding out what your estimates are for the cost for the rehabs, for those three homes. And I also kind of have a general question about the 55 years, okay? If you're required to, if an organization is required to use the place, and this isn't the first time it's been mentioned, for 55 years, I would think that that means somewhere during those 55 years, if not multiple times, they're going to have to do rehabilitation, they're going to have to do remodeling. And I was wondering if there's any requirements in our agreement with the nonprofit that they put aside a certain amount of funds to be able to do those rehabilitations? Or if future councils are going to face the situation to where the nonprofit comes back to the city and says, we need you to give us, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars to rehabilitate the place so that we can continue to use it as, not low-cost, but low-income housing? And then I also wonder if there's any time limits on, on the rentals in terms of, there's income limits, but is there any, you know, time limit, limit of how long they can live there? Okay? In other words, is there any incentive for them to improve themselves? And so that other people can be there so we can help more people? Or are we just basically buying a house for someone who can live there for a very long time? Okay, thank you.
Bill?
I'm going to begin, I'll begin with just a little bit from my talk. We have people who do not have, did not have the best of parents, or maybe only one parent. They did not have a child like, like, hood like most of us had. They may have been abused by their mother or father, or may have had a parent that was an alcoholic. Did they choose this kind of family style? No, they were born into it. They did not choose it. We need to treat everyone like we'd like them to treat us. I don't see any empathy here. I don't know where it comes from. I did promise the Turlock Journal I would try to be respectful to everyone when I spoke at the council meetings, and I'm going to try that, but sometimes it's a challenge because we had an opportunity tonight, and we just passed it up, that would have been of great help to our homeless population. Why was this not passed? Why wasn't, why did this not pass?
Can you focus on this topic for us, please?
So here we have some money, a total of, what was it, 400,000, 400, $481,000. Two years ago, we had $2.5 to $3 million coming to the city of Turlock, money that our taxpayers paid to the government, coming back to us with the City of Turlock-Stanislaus County Consortium funds. We had an abundance of funds that could be used to help the homeless and help people that were in need. And two people on this council voted to terminate those funds.
We're going to concentrate on this.
Transome to the Stanislaus County.
The other ones are already voted on. Let's get on this one, please.
So this is, we, we spent less than this, or about the same... So this is, we spent less than this, or about the same as this, to revamp four dwellings or a fourplex on Lambert. This is just a joke. This doesn't have any meaning at all. There's no empathy here, no understanding, no concern for people who did not choose to be in this situation. When are people going to understand? What do we have to do? What do you have to say? It's going to get worse, not better. You're going to have people all over that are homeless. They can't afford this kind of living we have. It's not going to be possible. The food prices are going to go up more and more and more. We're going to have more and more people on the streets. We need to have, I don't know, I don't know. It's just, this is not going to, it'll, it's good, yeah, it's a good thing, but it's a very small thing compared to what we had two and a half years ago, or two years ago, two and a half to three million per year. We'll never have another Vina Bella in Turlock.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, let's close the public comment, bring it back, dialogue or motions or, I'm sorry, hold on. I forgot, Ms. Figueroa, there's questions to be answered here.
Yes, so there is no time limits on how long the tenants can live there. There's nothing in regulation that states that we have to have that. I don't know if the, my experience has been the nonprofits do not either have any type of timeline for tenants to live there. The estimated rehab cost for those three properties is about one hundred and ninety-three thousand, which is about forty percent of our allocation that year. The fifty-five years, which is specific for PLHA, there isn't anything in the documents that prohibits a nonprofit to come to us later and ask for rehab costs. However, they own the property, so just like with Lambert, as things are coming up, we no longer, excuse me, own the property, so it would be their responsibility. I mean, they could always apply and ask for it. That doesn't mean they would necessarily receive it.
Is five percent an acceptable administrative fee? Does that cover everything, or is that what they'll give you?
That's all they'll give you.
But if they were charging, no, I'm just kidding. Any other questions, comments, response, will, desire?
Well, I will say, you know, are you regarding the options one and two that's in there, do you need more comments from us on how to proceed, or?
I believe that what we're looking for is just some guidance and direction at this point. We can actually write the amendment to say, because the rehab of the properties is allowable and either transferring to a nonprofit to provide affordable housing, or selling to first time home buyers within that income qualification range, is acceptable. So, I mean, if it's at the will of the council, we can bring something back for a little more formalized decision on that.
Do you have a deadline right now, though? Like, I mean, I understand that it's 2020, 2025, and they were moving forward, but are you supposed to have already turned it in? I don't mean like you did something wrong.
No, no, no. Yes, we, as this was new funding, and there was a lot of changeover in staff, we, there, this was supposed to already be in. And we have been having calls with HCD, and they are willing to try their best to push it through for 2020. We are definitely on board to get the rest of the year funds because we know the deadlines now, and we'll definitely move forward on those. But we do need to know if at least the approval of the amended plan would go through.
So if we didn't vote on this tonight and said, hey, bring it back for something else, we might lose out?
Yes, for 2020 funds, not for the future funds.
There are different things on the amendment and the guidance. I mean, I think the disposition of the properties would come back to the council anyway, you know, when they're ready.
I think it's important that that we move forward on this to access funding that's out there. And, you know, to, this is, we have many properties in our docket here that we, just having them sit there is not helping anything. So, you know, if we can get funding out there, that'll help us rehabilitate it and move forward. I like what you're saying with options one, a mixture of options one and two, because from my perspective, when it comes to housing, you know, it's it's an all of the above kind of answer, because different parts of our housing policy are helping different subsections of our residents. And particularly with PLHA, which you kind of mentioned, but eventually, when we're using, you know, these funds for first time home buyers, we're able to help people who are above median income. So this is not just, you know, the very lowest of the low, which we see in things that are more homeless service based. This really has the potential to get out there to help a lot of, a lot of, you know, a wide variety of people. So I am in support of this, always to make sure that we access the funding that our residents need.
Is that a motion?
Well, I wanted to keep it open for further dialogue, Madam Mayor.
That's fine. Then let's do it.
Then I will move to approve. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abrams? Yes. Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes, passes four zero. Thank you, Ms. Figueroa. All right, item C. Ms. Warner, you're back up, huh? Did I miss, yeah, she had to cut off because.
She dropped off.
Class. Time difference, yeah, definitely. Is that two hours? Okay. Development Agreement.
It's a development agreement. Good evening again. And so this item before you is a development agreement with, between the city of Turlock and Turlock Marketplace. Turlock Marketplace LLC owns the properties that are highlighted with that star. They're just north of, I believe it's Food Max and south of Tuolumne. They are proposing to develop that site for a commercial, a future commercial shopping center. What their concern is, and why we have the development agreement, is that in our general plan, we identify a overpass going from Tuolumne on, over the, over Highway ninety-nine over to, right around the Donley, oh, not Donley, Padretti and the church over in that area. So these are the three parcels that are part of that, that site. So the developers were concerned with maintaining access from Tuolumne going into what would be their future shopping center. This is a site plan of just a portion of the center. So as you can see on the, the red arrows, the, there would be access into the shopping center, the future shop, shopping center from Tuolumne, a left-hand turn, as well as right in, right out, coming in off of Tuolumne. So their concern was that with the future flyover, and there is no timing for when that flyover is, because there's not a lot of funding for that. So, and there's, you know, it would be several years down the road, but it is identified in our general plan. It has been identified in our general plan for the, you know, ongoing, it's part of our circulation. So even with our next update that would be coming here in the next few years, they would be looking at that again and probably maintaining that there. So the developers had a legitimate concern that, that it potentially could, could have an effect on their access to the center. But if you, this is out of our general plan, and that's where the little arrow is showing you right where it is proposed to be. So the Planning Commission, as part of the development agreement, the Planning Commission hears the development agreement first. They did hear that at their December fifth meeting, and they did make a recommendation to the city council, that the city council approved the development agreement and the ordinance. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Warner? Okay, let's open it to the public. Anybody? Anybody? Yes. You sure?
I was going to say it's probably a stupid question, but you probably think that about a lot of my questions. Interesting. Thank you for the information about the flyover. Guess a concern that I have, I mean, I think this is, is good, okay? I'm not questioning that. I do have some concerns about the amount of traffic on countryside. Are our roads wide enough? And then also, in development agreements, that's the time when the city can ask for either concessions or special things from the developer. I know this was talked about when we talked about the cannabis development agreements. And I was just wondering if there was anything that we were asking from the developer along those lines to benefit the community. So, I mean, in general, I think it's good, but I do have concerns about the amount of traffic that we already have on countryside. And then the other question, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close public comment. Can you respond to that?
I might need a little bit of help from Director Fisher, but the countryside has been widened and aligned several years ago in order to handle the traffic that is anticipated for the shopping center. So that was analyzed in the general plan environmental document. But the, one of the things to help with the congestion, not only on countryside, but also to move traffic east to west in the future, and relieve any impacts from Folk Earth and Main, is that flyover. So removing that out of our circulation would have a, have a negative impact on, on our current circulation, so. But I'll let Director Fisher address.
Yeah, and anytime that we would do a development, we would certainly look at that. I mean, that's, that's a primary concern anytime we're going and looking through the, through the planning process. So I know that we would look at the traffic patterns, we would make, they would make recommendations, and then we would incorporate those changes into the design documents.
There are some stoplights or something coming just south of there, right?
There are, yeah. There would be a plan for it potentially, you know, one, I know for sure, but potentially two, to help, you know, ease some of that congestion and bottlenecks there.
Mr. Petralakis, did you have something, sir?
Yeah, I was going to just address the part that Mr. Bragman brought up. It is true that in a, you know, in major development agreements, it's a negotiation between the local jurisdiction, city or county, and the developer, and you can get community benefits, as was done in the cannabis development agreements. What's unusual about this one is that it's a very limited scope development agreement. It's really done just to assure the developer and their potential users that they'll have access, as was indicated in the staff report. So the city engineer went out and basically determined that the flyover could be done and while maintaining the access points. So thus, the proposal is consistent with all the planning being done with the city. So I think the city's determination was that it was such a limited use of the development agreement. It's really not approving the project. It's kind of vesting that access point, and then also does address the minimum things required under state law for a development agreement. But it really doesn't do much on the project itself. That'll go through the normal city procedure. So the city staff determination was, and I don't know if we're still under non-disclosure agreements or not, but the user mix was of sufficient interest to the city that it, that we felt the development agreement was warranted for this limited purpose, so that the developer could proceed with the project.
So will they come back with, I mean, I guess another development agreement when they're time to actually move dirt?
Not a development agreement, but any, any development of the shopping center, similar to what's north of Monovista Crossings, will have to go through the planning process.
And Turlock doesn't really use development agreements for, you know, land development.
Just for weed?
Historically, yeah, just, I think this might be the first one, other than the cannabis development agreements, and, you know, some of us love development agreements, but, you know, we don't, we don't use them in Turlock.
Okay, any questions or comments or statements or desires?
Move to approve.
I can second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abrams? Yes. Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes, passes four zero. Thank you all for that. All right, we have no action items, and I believe City Manager Wilson has a update or you're going to pass it over to the finance guy?
I'm going to ask, I just want to give you the good news about your steel response today.
Listen up. All right.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. So we did go to market today to the issuance of the twenty-nine point five million. Great news going into the market. We had a lot of offers coming in. As I stated, we had a twenty, twenty-nine point five going out. We had requests for over seventy million, so that shows you what the market interest was. A lot of that comes down to our credit rating, how substantial that is. Again, we issued, we went through a credit rate, we're coming back with a double A, just kind of put that back into standard. Within California, traditionally, you're, on average, you see most municipalities that are single A. So that tells you where our credit scores are coming in at. So with that, we also were able to secure more proceeds. With a better credit rating, we're not obligated to hold on to reserve. So the proceeds are going to be coming back to the project to be able to, go to the Rose Program is about thirty-one point two million. So because you have a premium coming with that issuance too as well. We did have a true, what they call a true interest cost factor of all in, because you have different interest rates at different levels of years and when they're issuing out. So we came up with a true interest cost of our interest rates at four point two seven. We're very happy and worried this is coming in, given the market conditions and everything's going along. Again, talking about how we bundled this together, one of the caveats that I, we kind of twisted in a little bit, I worked with the consultants and actually got, traditionally you have calls at ten, ten years for twenty-year increments. We went in and actually negotiated about twelve million of the overall package to be callable at six years. So what that means is we can actually refinance that structure and put more money back into the projects in G T to move forward. This project is a project that's continuously moving forward. It's not like a one and done. We're going to be doing multiple issuance, the more processes we can, we have, the more we can maximize our dollar amounts, the more projects we can do. So I'm very happy to, to report out today.
Awesome, awesome news. All right, councilmember, comments and announcements, councilmember?
I just wanted to say that for our firefighters that are, you know, aiding in the disasters down south, that we thank them for their service, and we send them our, you know, we, on behalf of my, you know, all of our residents, send them our well wishes for safety and for their thanks.
Yes, I'd like to piggyback on that. I've got family, as well as friends and friends of friends that are, that are down on the front lines, so our thoughts and prayers are with them. I had a constituent reach out to me today, a service animal that we're all familiar with, Genesis. I know I spent a lot of time at the police department and some of the fire department and other people. It's a comfort dog. Tom and Sue Baldwin, who are residents here in Turlock, are part of the team of the Lutheran Church charities that, that handle the dog, and they are being deployed along with, let's see what the numbers are, it's, I have it here somewhere. Well, I don't know exactly how many, but several of the dogs from the Lutheran charities are going to be heading to Southern California. And Genesis from here is leaving on Friday. And I was asked to, to put out, you know, everybody to, you know, wish God's be and for their protection and well-being. And they are having a, I guess, a send-off at the Baldwin's home, which is at twenty-two fifty-five Castleview Drive on Friday at eleven-thirty in the morning, and anybody is welcome. And they said if you follow the dog on social media, that put it out as a feed, and just that the dog is handled by several members of our community here, and it's a sweet thing, and they're doing a great job. Thank you.
I also want to just kind of piggyback on what Cassandra said, as far as the firefighters down south. I just want to thank you guys for your service, and I just wish them a safe return back home.
Obviously, yes. And then moving on to items for future consideration, I'd love to find out what's going on with the mobile home rehabs. And we talked at the beginning about how we're going to tell, Mr. Petralakis, how you're going to tell the responses. We were talking about having our website responses somewhere online at some point. Twenty-twenty-five looks like a good time to do it. So if we could do that, I would appreciate it. Other than that, I think we have a closed session.
Yes, fourteen A is Conference with Labor Negotiation Negotiators, California Government Code five four nine five seven point six A, Agency Designated Representative City Manager Reagan Wilson, Employee Organization Turlock Firefighters Association Local two four three four, Employee Organization Turlock Management Association Public Safety, B, Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipate Litigation California Government Code five four nine five six nine D two. Cases two.
All right, we will report out should there be anything. Otherwise, we'll see you on the twenty-eighth. Good night. Good night.
All right, we're back and we have nothing to report, so we are adjourned.